Good evening, everyone. Great to see so many familiar faces here. The October 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Marion County School Board is officially called to order. Measuring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read our board commitment statement. "We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. To work, our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success." For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Sean Martin, Donnellan High School.
Here.
Sanjay Karthik, Vanguard High School.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gullett. Please introduce the person who will share more information regarding tonight's inspiration and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure to do that. I'm going to have Ms. Kelly Brower come forward, and as she does, she's going to introduce one of our students who's going to kick off our evening for our Pledge of Allegiance, who is a Beanstack winner. So more on Beanstack up board. I know you've heard this before, but Ms. Brower's going to provide some more information. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Board Chair Thrower, Vice Chair Conrad, school board members, and of course Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I am excited to be here tonight to celebrate all of our students who are reading throughout the district. Last year, we purchased a program called Beanstack for all of our schools within the district. This is a K-12 program. This program is the leading solution for motivating students to read. Beanstack allows individual schools to grow their reading culture. It encourages healthy reading habits and literacy skills. The program motivates students to read books in their classroom library, and it fosters teacher-to-media specialist collaboration. For the 24-25 school year, we continue to utilize Beanstack to encourage all students in grades K through 12 to read. We kicked off our first quarter with our Back to School District Challenge on August 12th, and it ran through August 17th. Students were encouraged to log their reading minutes in Beanstack. Throughout the first quarter of our school, our students have logged over 400,000 minutes of reading. We know that reading has many benefits for students, from inspiring the imagination to improving academic abilities. When students embrace the importance of reading, they can reach their full potential. It is truly so exciting to see our students actively reading. And at this time, I'd like to call my friend Lily up to the podium to lead the pledge.
All right. Hello, Lily. You got this, girl. Good evening, Lily. Please stand into the light. Kelly, please stand.
Please stand.
There you go, baby doll. And now, what you have to do is say, "I pledge allegiance..."
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Good job, Lily. Yay!
The students, the top 150 who logged the most minutes in Beanstack, have won a token to redeem a book at the Book Vending Machine, which is here at MCI on the vegetable, on November 12th. The Book Vending Machine was purchased by the Marion County Literacy Committee in 2023, and a big thank you to the Public Education Foundation, who continues to provide tokens and books for the vending machine, and were able to keep it really fresh and full of lots of great titles. The schools with the highest percentage of active students logging their reading in Beanstack were Harborview Elementary, Madison Street Elementary, Maplewood Elementary, Lakewood Middle School, and Westport High School. Lastly, while we do not have all 150 of our student winners here tonight, I would like to invite some of our top readers to join me here at the podium. So first, we had Christian McParlin, a fifth-grade student at Harborview Elementary, and Harborview Elementary's media specialist, Ms. Nelson, who will be saying a few words tonight. We also have Olivia Arison, a third-grade student, first-quarter challenge, and I'm going to let Ms. Nelson say a few words about Beanstack.
Good evening. It is an honor to stand before you, all of you, to represent Harborview Elementary. I am proud to say that as a school community, we have come together to crush our reading goals. Last year, we had a total of 12,000 books checked out. As of today, the library has seen more circulation, more visitors, and more book logs turned in than years past because of Beanstack. As the book lady, I take pleasure in knowing that our kids are meeting new friends, taking new adventures, and learning new facts with every page they turn. The funding and recognition helps librarians continue spreading the love of reading and the love of learning, so thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, my student, my fifth grader, could not be here today, but he worked on this speech, and I'd like to still share it with you. Good evening, board, educators, and guests. My name is Christian McParlin, and I'm a fifth grader at Harborview Elementary. Tonight, I would like to share with you why I love books and why I like the library so much. I like to read because it passes the time. When I start to get bored, I pick up a book and go on adventure with the characters. My favorite book right now is The Diary of the Wimpy Kids, and I hope to read the entire series. I enjoy going to the library because honestly, it is the quietest place at school, but it's also the place where we can still have fun. For our school reading competition, I go on Beanstock to record my minutes twice a week from my reading log. It is very simple and easy to use. As your minutes add up, you earn badges and prizes. I want to be an athlete when I grow up, so I really hope Ms. Nelson hears this and adds sports stuff to her prize collection for the next round of winners. Thank you for having me here tonight and represent my school. Go Dolphins!
All right.
So we are very excited about Beanstack. Of course, we'll have a challenge each quarter, so here we go. Last year, we had over 2 million minutes, so I think we'll definitely exceed that this year, so thank you so much.
Thank you. We want to come down and take a picture with you, and before we do that, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the board, and it's really neat to have a program where we have all of the grade levels, you know, elementary, middle, and high, all representing together. You know, that's pretty cool. It shows the progression. And I especially related personally to the young man as far as being able to read and pass the time. Once I discovered that there were horse books in the library, there were no more problems with Nancy. So we'll come down and take a picture, and thank you so much for coming tonight. Always such a great way to start off a school board meeting, and it just keeps getting better, Dr. Gullett. I think that we have a few more recognitions this evening.
We do, Madam Chair. Thank you. And we started with remarkable students, and I want to move into our remarkable staff. So we had a couple of storms recently, if any of you hadn't noticed, right? Two hurricanes, and this I shared publicly last week. I think not all of our community knows that, and I think hopefully they will know now, that we are the only shelters in town. We are the only shelters in town, our school district. And Board, you can see in front of you a number of people that are here. I want to start by saying that we had about 300, actually, I think we're over 300 staff members that helped at a time of need in our community, all of Marion County's needs, but also people who came to Marion County seeking a safe place to be to weather the storm. And we've invited them here tonight, all that could attend, and for those who can't, we appreciate you so deeply. The amount of time, commitment, that you see in front of you and of our staff that left their families to be in shelters to spend the night, the amount of time that goes into preparing the shelters, serving the shelters, the post-storm work, because there's a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure then, our team that goes out after the shelters are closed, to make sure that our schools are safe to return. And that doesn't happen overnight when you have 50 schools in the fifth-largest geographic size in the state. It takes a long time to go out, make sure that all the grounds are safe, the access for our transportation to get back on the road, but also to make sure they're safe to go in the building, that everything's operational, so we could return it to the state when we left. I am incredibly grateful, Board, I know you are too, for the sacrifice of our team and the sacrifice on behalf of the entire community, people coming from out of state to be here. I never once heard a complaint from anyone. No one said, "I can't." What I kept hearing was, "How do I help?" And so for the countless people, the hundreds, literally hundreds of staff members that committed selfishly of their time and their resources to serve others is just hard to say thank you enough. So I'm incredibly grateful. I'm going to ask everyone to stand. If you helped prepare the shelter, served the shelter, helped post-storm to make sure that our students and staff could return safely to the buildings, please stand, so the board can acknowledge and thank you. And if I may, the last count I just heard was 333, because we were still literally counting, thank you, Mr. Christian, still literally counting all of the people that served our community.
That's just absolutely incredible. And the work of over 333 people, I'm sure, provided a safe harbor to people that had no idea what they were going to be coming home to. We were fortunate enough here in Marion County, but that doesn't mean we weren't affected. And folks down in Pasco County and Pinellas County and other places that were just decimated. Seeing the compassion that each and every one of you exhibit towards the folks that showed up, I know meant everything to them. And a lot of our, I think almost everyone up here, visited the shelters, stopped in, reached out to principals personally to just see if there was anything else that we could do, you know, to help support. But in the end, you guys were the ones in the trenches, you know, making it or breaking it for so many citizens. And for that, on behalf of the board, we could not be more grateful. So thank you again, and we definitely want to come down and take a picture. It's going to take a minute to say thank you to all of you, so please give us that moment. We'll meet you down here. Please come down front.
He was doing some hard work.
There really are a lot of people going down.
Yes, yes.
I was at Legacy today and didn't have anything to do with their colors.
I don't even know what their color... Oh.
I can actually get everybody this way.
No more wheels for you.
Uh, no. Look at this. It's been hanging around. Well, couldn't be, uh, he has to, it must have been a bad thing, because he's probably lost 50 pounds.
All right, Dr. Gullett, as we continue to clear the room, what's next?
Yes, right. Just so grateful. We will go back to our amazing students now, and really appreciative of the opportunity to welcome our newest school board representatives from our student body here tonight. I walked in and said, "It's never the same when our students aren't here," so I really appreciate the board having representatives. I am very pleased for quarter two to introduce the following. Sanjay Kartik is a senior at Vanguard High School, and he is in the IB program. In addition to being in the IB program, he shows leadership skills as a commanding officer of the NJROTC, and he's participating in marksmanship, color guard, and drill team competitions. That's quite a lot. Also serves as the vice president of the school's academic team, and is in NHS, and participates in the chemistry club. So we are really pleased to have Sanjay here, who wants to pursue a degree in aerospace engineering as well. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Sean Martin is to my immediate right, who is a senior at Donnellan High School, and he is a Division I athlete. That's a lot of work. And is currently committed to Eastern Michigan University to play football in the Mid-Atlantic Conference. We know who we're going to be following. Can I get those colors out? Additionally, he is also, in addition, is the starting point guard on the basketball team and serves as a captain for both football and basketball. I'm not sure how you have time for both of that, but that's, we're really proud of your leadership there. And you participate on the track team? Is that accurate, too? Okay. Member of FCA and NHS as well. And we are so appreciative of all the work you want to do. I also want to point out that you're the team chaplain on the football team. So service in a whole different way as well. So again, so proud of both of you and your accomplishments thus far. Can't wait to watch you fly, and so proud to have you here. So, Board, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are thrilled to have both of you on board, and we'll keep you as long as you're able to stay, and thank you for the time that you're taking, because you're obviously both very busy, as Dr. Gullett shared. So we appreciate you sharing your time with us. All right, well, we are going to move on to recognize a donation. We graciously acknowledge the following donation made to benefit our school's students and staff members, including $5,100 to Vanguard High School from the Carolina Panthers Charities Donor Advised Fund to be used to support the Vanguard High School football program on behalf of former Carolina Panther legend and Vanguard High School alumni, Drayton Florence. So that's pretty cool. And thank you very much, Mr. Florence, and on behalf of Vanguard High School, for your very kind and generous donation. We sure appreciate it, and we'll put it to good use. All right, Dr. Gullett, please make a recommendation on this evening's school board meeting agenda.
Happy to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 22nd, 2024 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-22.1, D-22.2, D-22.3, D-22.4, D-22.5, and D-22.6 that have been placed under discussion, as well as item C-18.1 that has been pulled and placed under the discussion, pulled agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell. Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 8th, 2024 school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero.
Ms. Martinez, please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting.
The notice for the October 22nd, 2024 school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on October 11th, 2024. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The evening speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. If there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board's here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled on the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, I'm sorry, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting, and parents may address the board regarding this discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families is also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair. Jamie Nyswonger?
Evening.
Hello, my name is Jamie Nyswonger. Do you guys need address or no?
Nope.
Okay, so as you guys may know, I'm a prior bus driver for Marion County Public Schools. I drove for four years. I recently transferred out and now work within another department in the school district. But my heart follows with transportation. So I see on the agenda today, D-22.1, the request to utilize Polk County School District's bid for school bus transportation. That contract is a school district services. On September 28th, 2021, the school board meeting, there was a contract. That contract was school bus driver temporary labor term contract, also with school district services. I would request that the school board review the performance of school district services during the prior contract. During the prior contract, you still had major driver shortages. It was never resolved. They provided a few drivers. The drivers they provided were not sufficient to fill the gap. They were to fulfill, I mean, we still, 20, 30 routes not covered. Granted, it was a rough time, but it's still a rough time now. Not much has substantially changed. The second thing I have is, you have bus drivers that drive these routes here at Marion County. Some of them longtime rush drivers. They're very happy with the routes they bid on. I would recommend that you review the IUPAC contract for route bidding. You know, these drivers that have been driving are just going to get ripped off. If you want to approve this contract, which is substantially greater than the last contract by dollar amount, and it's actually shorter in the length of the contract. So I don't know. I don't see how this could be functional. I would also request to review if transportation is mandatory for students that are being alternatively placed. Is it a requirement that Marion County Public Schools provides transportation? If not, that might be a conversation, too. Ultimately, I think we do need to consider the employees that currently work for Marion County Public Schools. If they've bid on and have been driving a route from MTI since the start of the school year, functionally, how do you think these employees are going to feel when you come out and rip them off that route? Why? If you want to approve this contract, go right ahead. Put these bus drivers that are coming in on the routes that aren't filled. Why displace your current employees? I don't know, but I mean, all these contracts that come in, I don't see the care or consideration for the... So did you guys really give the public and the employees ample notice that this was But what I did see was posted on this agenda item, it does state, word from word, by approving this piggyback bid, there will be sufficient drivers and buses to cover all the routes for students in Marion County Public Schools. And I would expect that if this is approved tonight, that that holds true. We do not have students without bus drivers. Because the end of last year and multiple meetings, I heard from the school board and from the school board employees that stood down here that said, we have ample bus drivers. We will not have buses without drivers. And this year, we have a lot of buses without drivers. We have a lot of kids late. It's a constant issue. It has yet to be resolved in multiple years. The employees are suffering, the kids are suffering. And what did Marion County Public Schools did? At the beginning of this year, right before the start of school, they approved to move all these alternative students to Marion County Schools. They weren't prepared. They weren't prepared for the classrooms here. They weren't prepared to teach these kids. They weren't prepared to transport these kids. Yet, they said they were. And they set these kids up for failure. These kids had a place to go. They had people willing to provide transportation and Marion County Public Schools did not negotiate to get them where they would have been cared for, where they have been, and displaced them. And now you're displacing other students who need services in our standard schools to accommodate other students. I think the Marion County School Board should have a full conversation and review this item thoroughly. Regardless of your decision, if it's approved, I do hope that the effect action results posted on the website with this board document is followed through. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dr. Sylvain Dore.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sylvain Dore. And first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to present at this Marion County School Board and also for everyone here who are at heart the best of our students. So I am Sylvain Dore. I'm a retired brain doctor and professor. I've retired from UF after 13 years being there and decided to stay in Florida because I love Florida. And not knowing any better, I decided to do some politics and now I'm running for state senate. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about a formal teacher. And I'm here to discuss about recruitment and retention of teachers. So I was invited by a recruitment subgroup from the board and we had kind of a roundtable discussion about different options. So, and also, I believe that I am a great public school product myself because I did all my education. I grew up really poor on the countryside and I was fortunate to have good public school, good public teachers who still have an impact on me today. So at UF, I was also president of the faculty senate and a member of the board of trustees and we accomplished different improvement. And two I'm especially proud is affordable housing and expansion of baby gator. Baby gator is essentially daycare and it's a daycare facility that allow all the kids to go and an environment that is very stimulating. And one of my plans is to offer that to every Floridian here such that we found out that it's extremely good tool to recruit teachers because we know teachers at a time when they have young kids. So zero to four would be a sponsorship, potentially $12 to $18 a day and that would be available for everybody. And then discussing about reviewing the numbers from the Department of Education in Florida, there's more than 5,000 vacancies for teachers. There's also a significant vacancy for substitute and we just discussed the bus drivers. And we know about the bus drivers, we should make sure we promote potentially free training because the issue with bus is also that it affects minority because not everyone has the flexibility to take the kids at different time. So that's something to keep in mind. I've been to different county and in Alachua, we just had 100 teachers who have just resigned. They just fired a superintendent, which is number eight, so that would be nine superintendent in 11 years. This has to be fixed. And I was in Levy County, I was sitting by a young teacher and she told me that the administrative burden was overwhelming to her. She wanted to do work-life balance. She was bringing a lot of work at home. She was not paid for that. She felt a bit bad about it. She decided to spend a bit more time at home. But then she felt, she was worried that she would be penalized at her next evaluation and potentially be fired. Interestingly, another student was presented for an award and he specifically highlighted how great she was. So that was quite remarkable. So in terms of incentive, we have to think also about incentive to retain the best teachers. We have to make sure we do bonus, but we also do simple documents, simple rewards, simple gift basket, simple appreciation because they're going through tough time. And for the new recruitment, I think it would be nice to consider an environment that is really welcoming. We should stop bullying the teachers because my mom was a teacher. It used to be a noble profession and I want to make sure it stays a noble profession and that's very dangerous. We have to make sure that when we bring them onboard, we assign them mentors, we review those mentors yearly such that because we know over time it can change. We do brown bag sessions such that when someone has a problem, they can discuss solution, et cetera. And we see with other counties what works great. And I think that these are all, we have the capacity in Florida to make the education number one in the country and I believe in that. We have to support and potentially cover continuous education because our teacher wants to keep up and the novel technology and all that. It would be nice if it covered. And a tool that I learned also is that when we recruit teachers, it's good if we recruit them as a team because teams tend to stay and stay together and be very productive. So in conclusion, I just want to say that it would be nice also when we consider about development to reserve a certain proportion of the units being developed, reserved for teachers, for policemen, for firemen, et cetera, because often they cannot even afford these options. So let's not be partisan for school. Let's make sure that, because we all want the best for our student and that's really what I believe and I thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Gullett, there's a few items that Mr. Dore mentioned that it may make him very happy to learn that there are quite a few opportunities that are being provided, both in transportation and also through recruitment for our staff and hopefully incoming staff. And I wasn't sure if our executive director of employment services is here tonight. I know our supervisor of transportation is here, so.
They certainly are. Ms. Marant just waved. If you want to connect, I know she would welcome the conversation. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Martinez, do we have any other speakers tonight?
Ms. Kristen Brinkley.
Good evening, Marion County School Board members, employees, and Marion County families. Before I begin, I would like to take the opportunity, before I begin, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address one of my concerns this evening. While you may not agree with what I have to say, my hope is that in listening, it will encourage further discussions before any final decision is rendered. One item on tonight's agenda is permission to utilize Polk County School bid for bus If approved, some positives include use of newer buses, larger seating capacity, and functional air conditioning systems. It is also my understanding that the service would be used for students assigned to MTI for alternative learning education. While I believe in education for all students, the shared responsibility should not be placed solely on the shoulders of our schools and our communities. Some of the responsibility belongs to the parent or guardian of the child. As a parent, if my child lives within a radius of less than two miles, attends a zero period or I request an area of placement and it is approved, I as the parent or guardian am responsible for transportation. If bus transportation is not available, my options may include before and after care, a change in work schedule, carpooling, or utilization of car line. In some cases, other options may include students walking or riding a bike to school. Those students walking or riding the bike to school may do so with or without adult supervision. Regardless of the options I have mentioned, all of them incur some type of expense. What I would like to do is to suggest other sources for funding, excuse me, for funding or other options for transportation of alternative learning students. One option is a step up for students. Step up for students offers a transportation stipend for grades K through eight to attend a public school other than the school the student is assigned. That stipend is an award of $750 per household. In 2023, 45,651 students were enrolled in Marion County Schools. If even 5% of those students were eligible for this stipend, that would amount to more than the 1.7 million mentioned in the current bid. Other options, although not popular, would be for the parent or the guardian of the alternative learning student to be responsible for transportation. Perhaps another option of a transportation fee could be possible. I do understand that this may place a financial burden on parents or guardians. I also understand that some students are placed in alternative learning environments due to behaviors caused by medical conditions. In those cases, I would suggest medical assessment and treatment by a medical professional. You would not let a child with an uncontrolled condition such as diabetes, seizure, or asthma continue without medical intervention. How is a manifestation of behavior due to medical condition any different? A school's primary responsibility is education. While there are many other concerns I would like to address, my allotted time for the board is limited and coming to an end. Surely there has to be a way to meet the transportation needs of our students. Should the board decide to proceed with the permission of the contract, could there be provisions? In their provisions, I would like to see things addressed such as the shortage, excuse me, such as shortage for bus drivers and coverage of those routes and the pay of our transportation employees. A crisis by definition is a time of intense difficulty, trouble, or danger, or can be a time when a difficult decision must be made. A catastrophe is defined as a tragic outcome of a situation that results in destruction or irreplaceable loss. It's no secret that nationwide, we are in an educational crisis. We, as a community, cannot afford the irreplaceable loss of education over something as simple as transportation. Again, I'd like to thank you again for your time this evening and allowing public comment on this concern.
Lily, thank you. Ms. Martinez, do we have any other speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and shift back to our agenda for this evening with some information items. The school district used a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, known as GMP, to perform construction work on the following projects. To allow the district to purchase materials through the owner direct purchase, known as OPD, process to save sales tax, the construction manager needs to return the funds to the owner via a deductive change order. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval will be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders will be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The superintendent's approval of the change orders will be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. Amendment number one to the construction manager contract, GMP, for equipment early procurement related to construction of new elementary school W. Change order number two. Amendment number one, project 24-101, will allow the district to save approximately $27,696.12 in sales tax. Amendment number three to the construction management contract, GMP, for labor and materials consisting of interior construction related to construction of new elementary school X. Change order number five. Amendment number three, project 24-102, will allow the district to save approximately $29,840 in sales tax. This will allow the district to save an approximate total of $57,809.12 in sales tax on these two projects. Further, the school district used a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, GMP, to perform construction work on the following projects. There were unused funds on the project. Since these projects were delivered using a construction management delivery with a GMP format, unused dollars regardless of the item are returned to the owner. The unspent monies will be returned to the owner via change orders, which will close the financial books on these projects. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval will be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders will be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The superintendent's approval of the change orders will be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. Replacement of roofs at buildings one and two at North Marion Middle School, change order number one, work authorization number four, project 23-140, is a deductive amount of $95,044.75. Replacement of roof at buildings eight at North Marion High School, change order number one, work authorization number seven, project 23-130, is a deductive amount of $45,726.96. The total amount of unused funds for these two projects is $140,771.72. That concludes the information items for this evening. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, C11.1 through C19.1, with the exception of items D22.1, D22.2, D22.3, D22.4, D22.5, D22.6, that have been placed under discussion, and item C18.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, pulled agenda items. May I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second. Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on to student disciplinary matters, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement lists for students through September 23rd, 2024. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If there were, they would be addressed at our upcoming special board meeting on November 7th, 2024. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD25-050, JD25-051E, JD25-053, JD25-059E, JD25-060, JD25-061, JD25-062, JD25-064E, with educational services for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the first quarter of the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Conrad.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD25-035, JD25-036E, JD25-041, JD25-042E, JD25-045, JD25-048E, JD25-049, JD25-054, JD25-055E, JD25-056, JD25-057, and JD25-058, without educational services for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the first quarter of the 2025-2026. quarter of the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, five zero. Moving on to our discussion items, may I have a motion to request permission to utilize Polk County Schools' bid number ITB049-MJ-0624 for school bus transportation?
Move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Goett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Hembrook and Mr. Ostonik are going to come forward. Board, this contract, should you approve, is approximately $1.74 million, and this is a piggyback agreement proposed to support our alternative learning program that's now here at Marion Technical Institute. So, Dr. Hembrook will kick us off with a presentation on this item. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hembrook.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Just wanted to start off with giving everyone a synopsis or a reminder, really, about the students that we serve at the alternative learning at MTI. And so we have different students that are here, and so it's important that we all understand what students are receiving their education here. So we have students in work-study, and these are students that have earned their high school certificate, and they are completing an additional three years of educational services because they are students in the exceptional student education program, and we're helping them with work skills so that they can be successful after the age of 21. We also have some K8 students here on a continuum of services. These are also students that are in the exceptional student education program, that this is their placement because they need some more very specific strategies. And then the other group of students that we have are students that have committed some type of behavior infraction based on the Code of Student Conduct, and those students are here either on an alternative placement, which is a minimum of 45 days, or they're also here, they could be here for an expulsion, which is a full school year. So, when we're talking about that particular group of students and we're talking about transportation, the transportation needs at MTI for that group of students who are committing behavior infractions, that can change quite frequently. It's very hard to determine exactly how often those students will change because it really depends on behavior infractions that happen out at the school settings, at their base school. So, because these changes happen so frequently, this could impact, or it can impact, a bus driver's route to MTI. And so when we look at adding additional students to a particular route that a bus driver has, that impacts all the students on that particular route because their times might change, but it also changes the route itself a little bit for the bus driver, so the consistency for pickup times can change, and it's very fluid when we have to add students. So, because of that, what we looked at is, I'm sorry, I wanted to also say, at the end of a quarter, we also look at students that have earned their way back to their base school, and we send out communication to schools and transportation that indicate these particular students have earned their way back to a base school, and then transportation changes again at the end of every quarter. At that timeframe, that tends to be more students. So again, it's another change, and transportation does an amazing job with working with alternative learning to try to route those students, but because of the number of students that we're talking about, and it's not just our students here, but all of the other things that they have going on, you know, they ask us to, a lot, for at least 10 days, to route a particular student, and so when we're talking about it might take 10 days to get students here providing transportation, then we're missing educational days and services for kids, and we definitely want them in school as quickly as possible. So all of those challenges have brought us to talk about what it is that we can do to help ensure that we're providing consistency for the bus drivers, we're helping transportation with all of their other needs, but also we're making sure that students can get here for their education. The piggyback contract was one of our options to outsource and provide a service so that we could get students routed more quickly and provide some of that consistency for our bus drivers. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Ostonik, and he can kind of talk to you about what that might look like for our bus drivers' next steps.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody, or evening, I guess now, the day's kind of running together. I'm going to talk a little bit about the next steps for our MTI drivers, just so you guys are all aware. We have 18 routes that service MTI, and there's a difference between a route and a run. A route encompasses all schools that the bus, a particular bus, services. So, when I say that, we have 18 runs at MTI, but that's 18 routes. All of those buses that are, those 18, all of those 18 buses service other schools. So it may be one other school, it may be two other schools along with MTI. So when we have made this decision to outsource, or to talk about outsourcing our services for MTI, we didn't do so lightly. We're able to take the current routes that we have that are serviced in MTI, add our open routes to those, and create new routes to be able to close the gap on the 10 routes that we have that are open right now around the district. So, I'll make sure I get this out correctly, to make sure that we have those, are able to cover more open routes, or more open runs. So each one of those that we have available, if we take 18 runs and we disperse those throughout our open routes that we have, and combine new routes, that's going to give us the opportunity to cover, obviously, get more students to school and meet on-time arrival. That being said, it does create a kind of a conundrum with the bid process, and one of the things I want to cover here is there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and I want to be able to talk to our drivers and aides at this point. If you currently have a route that you're on that does not serve alternative programs at MTI, you're not affected by this, okay? Those drivers currently will keep their routes regardless of seniority and all that. They bid on those, those are their routes. Now, when we combine new routes and create new routes according to IUPAC contract, we have to rebid those. So our 18 drivers and 16 aides, there's 18 drivers, 16 aides that are helping with MTI, their routes will have to be recreated to encompass the open routes we have. Those will go up for bid. With that being said, when those go up for bid, anyone that has a bid, any driver or aide that has a bid, is able to bid on that route, and that's selected through seniority, through the zone that it services first, and then if no one in that zone selects the route, someone from another zone could select the route, or bid on the route. Does that make sense? Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because I know there's a lot of stuff out there, and I want to make sure that our drivers are aware. Yes, we're affecting our 18 drivers and 16 aides here at MTI, but anyone else within the district, within transportation, they would be making a choice to have their route changed if they chose to bid on a route that we create when taking our current open routes and the other runs that are servicing on buses that work for MTI, when we combine those. So, I guess at that point, I can kind of open it for questions. I will say that once we get through tonight, the first thing I will do tomorrow, if this is approved, is I will set up a meeting with our drivers and aides that this has an effect on, and we will meet with them and go through, answer any questions that there may be, and talk with them, and try to explain everything as best as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Ostonik, appreciate it. We'll now open it up to the board for discussion. Who wants to take the first swing? Board Member Cummings.
Mr. Ostonik, thank you.
I tried to run off, sorry.
I seen you trying to run past. Thank you for the clarity, because there is a lot of misconceptions and rumors that are inaccurate. Thank you for clearing that up, because we do value our transportation department and those people. This, from my understanding, this is going to help us get some other routes on time, possibly, through the system. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. We have already made a lot of progress, and that's because the transportation team, all the folks from our drivers, aides, routing, our garage, all our folks within, our management team has done a great job of kind of trying to create as many, as high of a percentage of on-time arrivals as we can, and currently, that's between 3% and 6% higher every week than we were last week, and when you say 3% and 6%, what does that mean? We're talking between 660 kids and 1,100 kids a day that are getting to school on time as opposed to last year.
So thank you, thank you for the clarity.
Board Member James, go ahead.
So I know we've talked privately, and I just want to have a few other things I want to clarify. So first, and both of the ladies tonight that shared public comment, I think, have some very valid concerns and bring to light some narratives in the community, and some have been not completely accurate, and I'm glad that you've had opportunity to correct that, but there are others that have validity. So, one of the ladies this evening mentioned that the narrative says all of the routes for students in Marion County Public Schools, and that's what this narrative says. So, I know that prior to us taking on MTI, alternative learning, transportation was ready and prepared as we were approaching August to essentially have all of the runs and routes filled to the best of your ability, and then MTI's alternative learning kind of put a wrench in that, and then obviously, the season has been what it is. And so, do you still feel confident that all of the routes for students in Marion County Public Schools are going, we're going to have sufficient drivers for that? Because I feel like that is a pretty strong narrative, and I want to make sure that that is what we all think is going to happen, and then if so, how quickly is this being turned on, and when is this transition going to happen?
Okay, first of all, I'm never going to promise you 100%. That's our goal, it's always our goal, 100% on-time arrival. We are going to constantly have people that call in, we're going to constantly have FMLA, workers comp, accidents, trains that are stopped, like we had the other day, they're stopped, and you can't get across, and you're sitting for hours. There's always going to be those things. So, our goal is 100%, I can't stand here and ever promise you 100%. Now, that being said, we should be able to get where we're reaching 95% on-time arrival on a regular basis. That's a personal goal of mine. We have to be able to fill all our seats to do that, so.
So when do we think, assuming, if the board votes yes tonight, when is the transition occurring? What is the timeline for the rollout? When are the new bus drivers coming? What does that transition period look like?
Thank you for the question. So, November 1st is the date that we've been working with the company, that they're ready to give us some drivers. So they already have, I guess, in their employee, employed staff, five drivers ready to take over at least five routes effective November the 1st, if that's what we want to do, and then it's going to have to be a phased approach because they do have to do some recruitment and training, and so we will be working closely with transportation, and if this gets approved tonight, that's one of our next steps, is to schedule a meeting with Mr. Ostonik, Transportation, and my team, as well as the new contract, to plan out that phased approach.
So that circles back then to Ms. Nicewenger's comment tonight, which I think is based in some validity. We have 18 drivers with buses, 18 runs, I learned some lingo today. So we have 18 runs that sit out here every afternoon when we arrive, we all see them. What I just heard you say is this company has five people to fill those 18 buses that are currently needed for MTI. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
So, they keep five to six on staff permanently so that when they have a company that outsources their transportation, that if we want to implement that need right away, they can go ahead and start that process.
So, do they pay more than we pay?
I don't know what their pay is, I couldn't answer that.
Do we have a non-compete that says our employees can't leave and go work for them, since that seems to be a topic of conversation as of late?
There's not a non-compete in the contract, but we've.
So, if we can't find, and I'm just trying to have a transparent conversation, because Ms. Nicewenger had some very valid points. If we can't find bus drivers, then how is this company going to find presumably 13 bus drivers to fill those runs? What is the strategy this company presents that would make us be advantageous to pay them?
So I'd have to go back to the company and find out how they recruit. When I spoke with the gentleman that we've been working with, they recruit from around the surrounding counties, but they agreed not to recruit our bus drivers.
Got it. Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? You're muted.
I do. Just for clarity, all students, these MTI students, they are all Marion County Public School students, correct?
That is correct.
And even when they were under the contract at Sermi, they were still Marion County Public School students, correct?
The ones that we transitioned back here were all Marion County Public Schools. I know that that contract had serviced other students.
Right, I'm talking about the ones that came back.
The ones that came back were Marion County Public Schools.
And because they are Marion County Public School students, they are still entitled to all rights privileges of any other Marion County Public School student, correct? Such as transportation. Y'all can say.
I'm going to go ahead and, so we've had conversations about this, I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Attorney Blackman, because he can talk to you a little bit about that.
The general answer is yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
As we go through.
Start right there.
All right.
Start right there, and you start right there, because there's a perception that because these kids are alternative placed, that they're not entitled to transportation, they're still our students, they are still our students, and they still deserve to be transported if there's an opportunity to transport them to school. So, thank you. You don't have to say anything else.
All right. Any other comments from board members?
Yes, I just.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
First, I want to thank you. This has been, at least since I've been on the board, transportation has been a challenge, really since, can you hear me okay? Really since COVID, and so we've been lacking bus drivers, and then when we transitioned students to MTI, that was a hiccup right before school started. And so we've been facing this challenge for quite some time, and I just want to say, even though it appears there's some things that need to be worked out, I appreciate all of the time and effort that's been put into thinking outside of the box, finding a way to get all, not just our MTI students, but to get all of our students to school on time. So just want to thank you for that. And then, so my question would be, if we have five bus drivers that are ready, would that come out in a rollout session? Do they, I mean, how do we move forward if we only have five that are ready to go from this outside company?
So we would do that as a phased approach, so I would work with Transportation and Mr. Ostonik, and we would identify probably the routes that would help other students in the district. So which routes would we identify to start with that would impact the largest number of on-time arrival and more support for the students on getting to school on time?
And did they give you any type of timeline of how long they feel it will take them to recruit the staff that they need?
So they said it takes typically about two to three weeks to recruit and get them trained, and I think that's the standard amount of time. So it just depends on how many that they can find out there, and then they have to obviously get them trained.
Okay, and with, you may not know the answer to this, but with this conversation has been rolling for a little while, have they, do you know if they've been working on upping their numbers? Are they close, are they in the process of hiring other drivers, or is that something you don't know?
I don't know, I know that they've had other advertisements out there, but I don't know that if they've necessarily advertised for us, I think they're probably waiting on whether or not this contract would be approved, but I'm not certain on that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Board Member Campbell?
Thank you. I, I've been sitting here thinking, do I want to weigh in on this? Because Vice Chair Conrad just said a lot of what I wanted to say. The out-of-the-box thinking is what I appreciate here. Ever since you've taken over, Mr. Ostonic, it's, we have had increases in our on-time arrivals, in part because your team is working diligently. We have new start times across this entire district because of the thought processes and trying to make sure that students are getting to school on time. So, I appreciate that. I also understand that changing, making all the changes we did kind of in the midnight hour on the MTI thing through transportation for a loop. So, I, I understand all of that. The point I wanted to make was that when we did have alternative placements and expulsions outsourced, those students all were entitled to transportation. And so, those students at that time, when they were used, when we were using an outside vendor, they were receiving transportation. And, and so, they were entitled to that at that time. And I think that's the point that Reverend Cummings was trying to make. Um, just because they've had behavioral challenges, doesn't mean they're not still entitled to the transportation that, um, they can be afforded. Now, certainly, if they have misbehavior on the bus, that privilege can be taken away. And we understand that. We've written that very strictly in the Code of Student Conduct, right Chair Thurmer? Uh, that's, that's a really important point to make, that, that privilege can be taken away. Uh, but it is still this board's intention to make sure that students are afforded the opportunity for transportation, should that be, um, the need that they have. So, I understand the concerns that we've seen and I appreciate you clearing up the misinformation. There's been a lot on social media. We heard public comments today as well. Um, I, I will be voting in favor of this. I'll, I'll just say that. I'll be voting in favor of it because of what it can do for all of our students and what it will be able to afford us the opportunity to treat a unique school in a unique way. And so, as Dr. Hembrock has already outlined, this, this school, this placement of MTI services many different students and many different unique needs. It's not just the new site for alternative placement and expulsion. So, when we have a unique situation, we need to treat, treat it uniquely. And so, that's why I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Vice Chair Conrad?
Um, just one more thing. Um, I will also be in, voting in favor of this. And even though, um, I wish that we had 18 drivers ready to go from this outside company, um, everything that comes before us, I ask what is best for our students. And so, for me, what is best for our students is that we will have five more drivers available to get five more busloads of students to school on time. And so, I just wanted to share my thinking on that. And thank you again for your work in this area.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Board Member James? Well, just one last clarifying remark. So, if we're starting with five, does that mean that five runs or routes are going back out for bid? And then, as new hires from this company come forward, then more, is there going to be like a continual rebidding deal as, as our runs get offline because we have someone to cover it from the third party?
I think that's something that's going to require a little discussion. Um, i- in fairness, um, from my point of view, I would like to see us, um, hold off on the bidding process because we can still have drivers drive a route and just don't have them use their bid yet until we have everything in place. That way, everybody has to, gets a fair opportunity to, um, to bid at that point. Um, as opposed to doing five and then three. So, we're going to have to look at the timeframe and see if it's going to be, if we can get it done in a, in a month period, I say we hold off. If it's going to be a, a longer period, then we may look at bidding in a, in a rollout fashion.
And that reminds me, I just want you to reiterate that point you made to me, Mr. Ostonic, regarding absences, because essentially, if they're not driving the MTI route, they're going to be down a run. So, can you, um, articulate how bus drivers will still be able to get their full hours or more if needed?
Well, I'll give you an example. On, on Monday, we had 19 drivers that called out. And that's, that's not including our FMLA. That's not, not including workers comp. That's, that's not including any of that. That's just 19 drivers that called out. So, we're going to have, any driver that wants the opportunity to, to, uh, get an extra run, if it fits within their schedule, we, we welcome them to come in and, and, uh, we try, we try to, uh, make it work. You know, sometimes, depending on what their runs are, what their route is, you can't make it work, but it, 95% of them are, are getting used, I would say at least.
And then, in, within the IUPAC contract, because maybe we'll have a month lapse in time from when we stop using, when we're in this lull, our drivers will continue, everything will maintain the exact same then, is what you're, we're essentially saying, until we have enough drivers queued up with the third party to do a swap. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
What I would recommend there is keeping the primary hours that the drivers have currently. So, they're, when a driver bids on a route, it could be, they're guaranteed six hours, but it could be up to eight hours. So, whatever their current primary hours, I would say keep that in place. You know, and, and once we get all the new routes done and we rebid, their primary hours could change, up or down a little. But keep their primary hours in place until we, until we get, um, everything ready to do a, a bid for those 18 routes.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion from the board?
Um, well, I'd like to weigh in. Um, and I, I want to start with the big picture. Uh, you know, we sit up here every week after week and say, we're here to help every student succeed. And when we took on this project at, at the last minute, because there was a lot of negotiation, um, it looked like it was going to be a lot less expensive for us to take it in-house. Um, the negotiations went down to the last hour, which made this transition much more challenging. Um, and I'll always appreciate SERMI and, and Newley for the work that they did for so many years to diligently try to serve a very tough population to serve. But the bottom line is, we're looking at a 36% graduation rate average for kids that are in these alternative programs. And I believe the whole board voted unanimously and with confidence to take these kids on, that it was the right thing to do, it was what's best for kids, to give them the opportunity. Because once a student becomes alternatively placed or expelled, um, they could have, they could apply for any scholarship they wanted to, but private schools have every right not to accept them. Um, we have had conversations just the other morning about a virtual school, the kids not even on campus and not accepting them because they've been expelled. That makes absolutely no shred of sense to this board member. They're not even on the property. I think that's why it's called virtual school. So, these kids are up against tremendous challenges. I think I heard earlier, um, that, you know, the parents should be responsible for bringing them. Well, I think that if we did a survey of the kids that were serving in the alternative programs, people would be shocked at how many of these students are not even living with one blood parent. A lot of them are couch surfing. We are their last shot. And the bus drivers that are bidding these routes, um, develop special relationships with the kids. Um, they, they want that to continue. They, they bid these routes for a reason. Um, so I'm hopeful, I know we have to follow IUPAC contract. Bottom line is, our bus transportation issues are not going to be fully solved until we're back to where we were many years ago, where we had a pool of drivers to pull from. So, it wasn't just enough to cover the routes. So, you know, we had reserves, so to speak, that we could call in, um, to help. And speaking of being called in to help, um, I've been driving a van to, to pick up kids at Ocala Springs Elementary School whenever I can, to take them out to the forest because it's two kids. But they, because of their needs, that's where they're assigned. And it, then that way, an office staff, and we've talked earlier about, um, employees having to do other duties as required or assigned, I would, uh, point to the example of the Transportation Department, where we have office managers, routers, all kinds of people that are still driving kids to, to cover the gap. So, anyone that is doing anything other than trying to help solve this problem is the problem, as far as I'm concerned. And we have got to continue to think outside the box, like our, some of my fellow board members have said. We're $12 million in the hole every year. Um, I listened to you, Ms. Boston Ellis, our CFO. We, we are $12 million in the hole every year, trying to serve our kids to make sure that every kid gets a ride to school. So, it goes a lot deeper. And it also is a little bit frustrating, I will say, when we hear public comment. And when I've had direct conversations with the commenter who quit the first day of school and left transportation really in the lurch and, and hanging. So, to me, that doesn't quite follow the heart being for transportation, but, you know, that's, that's for them to, um, live with. And all we can do up here, and this is why I'm going to vote yes, is continue to do everything we can to pull out the stops, to solve the problem, to be of one accord, to make this better. And the good news is, is that we're headed in the right direction, um, compared to where we were. The challenging news is, is that what it takes to serve our MTI alternative kids, that challenge is, is not going to change. The kids are going to keep coming. They're going to keep needing our help. And we unanimously said that we were up to the task. So, I'm going to continue to get behind you and push and sit behind the wheel and do it too. So, I'm ready to vote. Board Member Cummings? Anything else? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you very much for everything you do every day.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. May I have a motion to approve the Aetna Behavioral Health LLC Second Amendment?
So, move.
Move by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
I think there was a tie, but we'll go with Vice Chair Conrad, seconding. Um, Dr. Gollit, you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Boston Ellis is going to come forward and introduce a, a special guest from our team, who's going to provide some information, board, on this item, um, regarding the Employee Assistance Program. And the cost for this item, should you approve, is $160,000. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Thuror. It feels good that you listen to what I say. Board members and Superintendent Gollit, it is, um, exciting to bring to you tonight a recommended action to approve the Second Amendment for Aetna Behavioral Health LLC for our Employee Assistance Program. You probably know it as the EAP. Ms. Laurel Lingle from Gallagher Benefit Services will join us tonight to provide a brief overview of the program and some additional information of how it's performing. This is yet another great benefit that is provided for our employees and their families. Ms. Lingle?
Thank you. Good evening. I, um, sat in the back so I could get some more steps for the step challenge.
Good for you. That's commitment.
Um, as Ms. Boston Ellis said, my name is Laurel Lingle. I'm with Gallagher Benefit Services. Um, I'm excited to be here tonight to speak to the Employee Assistance Program. As she said, the Employee Assistance Program is offered through Aetna. It's called Resources for Living, and they provide services for mental health and well-being. Um, helps our employees build resistance and, and just deal with the daily life as it comes. So, this is a service that is provided to all of our employees. Um, it's important to note that some of the benefits that we offer are just for full-time employees, but this would be inclusive of part-time employees. It is also an offering that's available to members of their household. Um, again, I think it's important to note that frequently, the members of our employees' household are our students. Um, so, this is not only impactful to our employees, but also impactful to the students, um, and other members of their household. It does also service, um, dependents that maybe are not in the household up until the age of 26. So, um, I had an employee approach me one time, thanked me for this program. Um, they sent their child off to college. It was in Tampa. And he said, I, I truly believe that this program saved their life. They were struggling pretty significantly. As a parent, um, I think the parent felt pretty helpless. They're a couple hours away. And so, they were able to connect them to this program, utilize those free resources, and really get them on the right step, um, while they were off at college. So, um, the main services that the program offers is really, um, mental well-being and emotional support. There are a couple of ways that, um, employees and their, members of their household can access those services. One of them is in-the-moment support. So, um, you might think of a crisis situation. So, this is available 24/7. Um, the employees can call in to the Resources for Living program, and they can speak immediately with a counselor that can help them through that situation. Those services usually last between 20 to 30 minutes. Um, and then frequently, they are referred into some of the other more ongoing support programs. Um, so, counseling services, um, employees, again, and members of their household are eligible for seven free in, or counseling sessions per person, per incident, per year. So, if somebody was having marital problems, they would get seven free sessions. If maybe they had a death in the family, they would get seven free sessions. If they have two teenagers at home and everybody needs a little counseling, they would get seven more sessions. So, um, I think there are a lot of resources available to the employees, and they have several different avenues that they can access those resources. So, they can either do face-to-face counseling, which would be with a local counselor here in the area, or wherever the member or dependent was living. Um, there's a wide range of, you know, they can select which gender they would like, if there's a religious preference, um, if there's a specific area that they need counseling, and there's a special, um, spec, somebody that specializes in that area, they can choose the counselor based on that. They can also do like telehealth counseling, which is through Talkspace. Um, many of you may recognize that name. Michael Phelps was a huge proponent of Talkspace. So, that is the program that they use. Um, if, you know, somebody can't get to a counselor, that's an easy way that they can do it on their time. And then, the newest option is , um, chat counseling. So, this is, I'm sure, as you imagine, very popular with the younger generation. Um, again, this would not be for that, um, crisis situation or on-demand counseling. This is, uh, more of an opportunity for the utilizers to kind of be in constant communication with their counselor throughout the day. So, they are chatting back and forth, um, and one week of chatting would constitute one session. So, they would get seven weeks of chat counseling, um, per incident per year. Um, so, just a few other options that they have to utilize the Employee Assistance Program. They offer legal services. So, that's 30 free minutes, um, with an attorney. Again, per incident, per member, per year. Um, they can, um, be referred out for a discounted rate with an attorney if the 30 minutes, um, you know, yielded that they would need some additional services. They also have financial services, financial, financial counseling. Again, it's 30 minutes at no cost for every topic. So, um, maybe they need help planning to save for college. Maybe they need help budgeting. Uh, maybe they need help getting out of debt. So, every different topic that they had, they would get 30 free minutes with a financial counselor. Um, and then there's a wealth of resources, um, through the website, Resources for Living. Um, they have programs, um, series that they can watch or that they can participate in. Um, so, additional services are, that are available outside of the counseling sessions. Um, when we look at the Employee Assistance Program and the number of people served currently, um, in our current year-to-date, we're at about 14% utilization. That compares to about 16% um, from the prior year. So, you may look at those numbers and think, well, that doesn't seem very, um, you know, very high. It is above the current average for Resources for Living and also above national averages for utilization for Employee Assistance Programs. Always room to improve, um, but those are, um, the numbers where we're at right now. So, currently, we have about 646 members being served. Um, I'm sorry, total services, we have about 287 unique members that have been served. Um, and just over 700 employees or members have logged into the website at some point year-to-date, um, through August. When we look at the services that the employees are utilizing, um, face-to-face continues to be the highest utilized benefit. We're at just over 160, um, services being there. The telephonic services comes, um, in second. And then, um, again, the chat is a newer option. So, it is growing over last year, but still, um, in third place. Financial and legal, um, uh, legal, um, does come in before... Financial and legal, legal does come in before financial services, and then we do have some general consultations. So employees may just be calling in for general resources to the Employee Assistance Program. As far as the sessions, what they're being used for, the number one is relationship, and that's either marital or significant others, and that's just under 120 services used there. Anxiety and depression come in second and third, and then we have grief, loss, and stress as the other top sessions used by issues. One of the other services that is available is management referrals. So this year, during the superintendent's conference, we presented to the leadership for all of the schools and the departments. So the managers at the schools can call in to ask how they might handle situations at their schools. So maybe they have a situation and they are not sure how to approach the employee. They can call in and receive services and support through that management referral line. It is, they can also refer into that and say, "I have an employee that I believe would benefit from the Employee Assistance Program through that management program." So that is a great tool for, you know, those supervisors at the schools and the district So again, something that we advertise frequently. I find that when we have programs, employees maybe aren't paying attention until they need it. So it is very, very important that we continue to advertise and make sure that all of the employees at least know where to go. They can say, "Oh, I've heard that we have this resource available," and that they have some tools to be able to access it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lingle. That was a great overview, and I agree with you, it's not going to be top of mind until you really have something going on, and then even in that moment, you may not even remember because you're stressed. So continuing to advertise is wonderful. Thank you for the presentation. Open it up to discussion from the board? Anything to share? Yes, please share.
Thank you for the presentation. It really came at a great time. Dr. Gullett and I had the privilege to meet with a group of teachers last Friday, and they shared, were sharing their top priorities, and mental health was number one. So I'm really excited about this. I do think that advertising and helping our staff be aware of the resources that will be available to them is really important, but the timing on this just really is perfect. So I'm looking forward that these opportunities are available for our staff. So thank you.
Yes. And one other point I forgot to make is that the services are also available. I mean, we think of frequently crisis situations, but goal-setting or just somebody that they can be held accountable to when they're looking to, you know, maybe go back to school and they need somebody to be held accountable. The Employee Assistance Program is available to them for those services. So I think it can be used for a wide range of situations, not always just mental health.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from the board? And I'll just quickly say that we did have a couple of student board members recently that shared their passion for the mental health service field and that they wish that we had career and technical education pathways for mental health counselors like we do for veterinary assisting and so many other things, you know, industry certifications and pathways to be able to become certified as a mental health counselor. And it resonated with me that these services are available as long as you have someone that's an employee for young adults that are up to 26 years old. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Yes. That's just an amazing benefit. And when I think about all of the walks of life and everything that's going on these days, having this available, there's been concern in the past about, "Oh, is it really confidential?" And, you know, "Can I trust it?" But I think that that slowly is being proven over time, that it is very private and very confidential and just a wonderful comprehensive service
Yes.
for our employees and their families. So good stuff. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five zero. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price, known as GMP, for mass grading, early equipment procurement, and building foundations, shell and site work related to construction of new high school CCC, Project 24-105. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a very large item, as you know, approximately $65.6 million, and Yvonne Boombach is going to come forward, our interim director for facilities, to provide some context information regarding this first phase for the new and upcoming high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Board, Board Chair Thoror, Vice Chair Conrad, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Yeah, I think we all were waiting for this to come before you. We are eager to get this project started, and it is on a fast track for design, it's on fast track for construction. So a while back, when you approved the architect's contract, in there you could read that they are providing five separate bid packages to roll out documents quickly to the contractor. Those bid packages include mass grading, foundation and underground packages, early procurement packages, the superstructure and building envelope, and then the final package. While we are still fine-tuning the inside of the new high school to meet our needs, we are meeting with all different departments to make sure it does, especially the CTE Department and the ESE Department, so they all have some good input in there. This was the first GMP that was rolled out. It included the mass grading of the site, 115 acres, and the early procurement of all the long-lead mechanical and electrical equipment. There's also an allowance in there for the building foundation, the building shell, the utilities. It includes the foundation, the building pad, the concrete shell, the structural steel, things that will not change. We are just fine-tuning the inside. So we can go in more detail of what it's all included, but you have that in your document. I think you are more eager to hear when it's starting. We are trying to target November 5th as groundbreaking and still the substantial completion for July 17th, 2026 for the school year. And it's a very tight schedule, but we're doing everything we can to get there.
Thank you so much. That's so exciting. Any discussion comments from the board?
Chair, I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member James?
Just a quick question. So at the price point where we're at, which is significant, what is the projected owner-direct purchase savings that we should be able to capture?
So the contractor is putting a packet or a list together where they can see the ODP, owner-direct purchase items, and right now, we are looking at a list of $3.8 million.
In savings?
No.
What would be 7% of that or 6% of that?
Correctly.
Got it. Okay. I think that was my only question. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion comment from the board? All right. Hearing none. Yes, a $66 million item definitely was worthy of a little bit of discussion. So thank you for sharing that update, and we'll just look forward to the groundbreaking and keep going from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes four votes to zero with Board Member Campbell recusing. Thank you all. May I have a potion? May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with JB Brown Professional Group Incorporated, JB Pro?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Carlisle and Yvonne Boombach are going to, she's going to come back in a moment, but before I turn it over to Mr. Carlisle, Board referenced this item in conversation at our last meeting, a work session. We are currently, we are currently working with this company. They have, they're assisting with our inter-local agreement that we have revised for our technical working group and the items that we've agreed to in the agreement that are needed by, with that strong partnership we have with the county. So we have experts that are helping us to facilitate, again, creating and sustaining a very strong relationship and ensuring that the commitment we have through the ILA is met with all entities in that party. So what you have before you tonight, board, is consideration for $139,000 to extend what we're doing already and to help us with facilitating the facility development procurement process. Again, thinking differently about enlisting experts in the field to be more effective and efficient with our taxpayer dollars and also getting the work done appropriately. So I'll turn it over now to Mr. Carlisle. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Thoror, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. It's the First Amendment to the Agreement with JB Brown Professional Group, otherwise known as JB Pro. There are two parts to this amendment, as Dr. Gullett mentioned. The first part relates to their continued planning services under the inter-local agreement. Second part of the agreement relates to facility procurement services. We've engaged JB Pro to provide the planning services relating to Marion County Public Schools' responsibilities under the inter-local agreement. This amendment will continue that planning side, would extend that into the spring through June, and will ensure that we continue on with our obligations under the inter-local agreement. Additionally, this amendment includes services provided by JB Pro relating to facility procurement services. The work that they do is incredibly technical, so we have asked Nick Hill and Kathy Eball to be here this evening to share the work that they do. So at this time, we'll ask Mr. Hill to come up.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. Good evening, Board. My name is Nick Hill, and I'm a senior planner at JB Pro. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our wonderful school planning team to you. This team is spearheaded by our planning director, Kathy Eball, who joins us tonight, who'll be serving as the principal in charge on this effort. Kathy brings to the project over 20 years of school planning experience, both working with municipal planning teams as well as acting as school planning director herself. Assisting her on this effort is John Gilreath, who is a certified GIS specialist and has over 10 years of experience working as the GIS lead on various school planning projects across the state. The most recent addition to our school planning team is Rachel Muller, who has spent the last five years as a campus planner at the University of Florida, and Rachel will be assisting both Kathy and John in the process of doing the data analysis as well as mapping. And finally, my name is Nick Hill, and I come from seven years of planning for municipal governments, with four of those years spent managing projects at the local level. As such, I'll be the PM for this school planning effort, helping manage the day-to-day operations of the project, acting as your primary contact, of course, and wonderfully supporting our amazingly talented specialists in the field. For the procurement assistance project, JB Pro's school planning team will work with our talented construction management staff at JB Pro. Your PM will be Ian Daniels, who is a certified GC with over five years of experience, and will be joined by Lead Inspector John Watson, who brings over seven years of experience to the field, to the project. We couldn't be more excited to serve you on these efforts. And I am now going to invite the wonderful Kathy Eball to the podium to further discuss her experience in the procurement and school planning process and share how it will be applied to these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Nick and Chris. I'm excited to be here. I've been a planner for almost 30 years. I was recently inducted into the American Institute of Survivor Planners College of Fellows, which is the highest distinction our profession provides. But I'm especially proud to be here because school planning is a special place in my heart. Listening tonight to the wonderful work you do with students is something that most planners don't really get to do on a day-to-day basis, and I've had the opportunity to work on it for 20 years, 10 years, as a planning director for both Sarasota County School District and then for Lee County School District. So while I love every project that I work on, school planning has a special place in my heart. And to talk a little bit about the work that we're going to do, first, on the procurement project, as I mentioned, as the planning director at Lee and Sarasota County School Districts, I was also the project lead on the facility planning team for those two districts, where we worked together with staff to update and refine their procurement processes to better align the goals of the capital improvement project for the local school community with the procurement process so that we were ensuring that we really met what the project deliverable outcomes and strategies were. This helped reduce the costs of the projects by reducing the number of costly project overruns and change orders and provided increased transparency about what a school community could expect the capital project would receive. So we bring that experience to you in this effort, where we will be working with your facility and planning teams to do the facility procurement for future capital improvement projects. This will be done on a task order basis, so it's a, we have a not-to-exceed contract of $49,000, and that will be defined on a specific every task basis, and it will be done at an hourly rate rather than a lump sum. The lump sum project will continue, is what the second effort is, where we will be working with your technical education facility plan. This is continuing the effort that we're already working on, the superintendent mentioned, where we are trying to understand how the growth and development of Marion County will impact the student growth of your schools and therefore the capacity needs of your schools long-term, both today and into the future. We will look to understand and assess this information. We've already been working with your community. We were given a very tight timeline, and we have put all of our resources as possible into this effort, delaying other projects so that we could provide this for you because we understand the timeliness of it and we understand the importance of getting this to your community in the technical advisory meeting in November. So we have really hit the ground running, and I've spent many of my hours looking over the data that your school community has, both on the development side as well as on the enrollment data that we just received from two weeks ago. This effort, the immediate effort we're working on, will be to provide a report for the PSPO, but then we will expand that effort by advising that report and drafting a full technical narrative and report for the technical working group, which will happen later in the spring. And this will also expand by looking at school choice options. Those are not something that we're looking at in the current effort, but we will be looking at how school choice in Marion County is impacting your long-term capacity needs and school facility demands. We will also be looking to understand what your needs will be in the five-year and the 10-year, and then at build-out. So, and as I mentioned, this is a lump sum project, so it will, unlike the not-to-exceed that we're doing on the procurement, this is a lump sum, and so no matter how long it takes, how many hours it takes us, we'll put the effort in to make sure that you get an excellent project. The other part of this, in addition, as I mentioned, we've had to, we've had to really refine our work schedule in order to meet this current demand. We're going to be working with your staff as well as a technical working group from across the county and municipalities to refine your inter-local process so that it really aligns your schedule with the deliverable. The October 20, the October 40-day counts is the industry standard. Those are the numbers that we look to across the state when we're doing school planning. And so having a report due in November, when you're just getting the data in October, really doesn't give enough time for a thorough evaluation, doesn't give enough time for staff to evaluate, for discussions to happen, for us to be able to meet with your superintendent and other district leadership to really be able to do this in the way that we would prefer to do. So we're going to be working with your staff and as well as the rest of the inter-local group to understand what an improved schedule could be so that next year, when we do this, we do this in the best way possible, meeting the best industry standards and providing the best assistance that we can to support your efforts so that you meet the needs of your community, and we meet the needs of the educational demands for your students so that they can receive the best education possible. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments from the board? Go ahead, Board Member.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but my comment is going to be, "Thank you." It took a long time for this board to get a new inter-local agreement with our local municipalities, a very long time, including that technical working group to just start meeting for the first time a few years ago. first time a few years ago. And I'm very excited to know that we will have folks on our team who are experts in the field, and I mean legitimate experts, who have been work, working in Sarasota and Lee Counties. You've been a part of a lot of building projects, a lot, with a lot more capital resources than we have in Marion County. I actually made a statement last evening to a group I was speaking to, 1.5 Mills, which is the capital village that we're able to pull from our community that goes to capital, goes a lot farther when your property values are millions upon millions of dollars in a Sarasota or a Lee County. We don't have that same tax base or that same situation. So I'm certain as you've delved into it, you can understand the challenges that we have in Marion County. And again, I'm just going to say thank you. And thank you to Dr. Gullett for bringing us experts who can really help us in this arena and speak the language with the folks in the other municipalities that need that language spoken to them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion from the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none. I'll just say that I echo Board Member Campbell. Thank you for the, I know that we're going to continue to professionalize our practices, you know, refine them. I love what you said about effective and efficient, and the return on investment will be way more than what we're contributing. So, thank you so much and welcome aboard, hopefully. All right.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. I actually started my school planning career at Sarasota County Schools when I was a planner for the city of Venice, and we drafted the first interlocal agreement for Sarasota County Schools. So I've been working on these from both sides of the table for a very long time, and as I said, this is more than the planning job for me. This is my heart.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price, GMP for the Denellen Elementary School Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning HVAC Upgrades Project 24-116.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, you have information to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And Yvonne Bouback is back to the podium for this item. Just briefly, Board, $5.97 million roughly for the cost of the HVAC system replacement at Denellen Elementary. And so she'll provide some more context to this. Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Again. This might not seem so exciting as a brand-new high school or elementary school, but if you talk to the mechanical engineer, they get so excited when they see a new chiller. So this, this system, it's about the HVAC system of Denellen Elementary School. Right now, a little technical, it's a water-to-air package heat pump system, and it's way outlived its lifespan. It's struggling, and it needs to be replaced, and we wanted to switch it over to a much more sufficient new chilled water system. So we will install a new water-cooled chiller with cooling towers, new pumps, new air handlers in the mezzanines, new VAV boxes in the classrooms with electric heat and connected to new controls. The schedule for this project will start with the underground laying of the chilled water pipe, and we will start that in December through February. Most of it is outside of the school area, so we are not interrupting any student traffic. Then we're going to go into the mezzanines to start placing the new equipment. The mezzanines are very large, so that gives us the opportunity to fast-track that project as well, because the summers are very short to get all this work done on an entire campus. And then the new equipment will come in, as soon as the students are out in May, we will take over the school and disconnect everything and reconnect everything new. And by the time the students arrive in August, we should be ready to go.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none. And as I said, I've just generally added up $71 million so far in just in discussion items, and I was thinking about the student board members and whether or not that surprised you. You know, what it takes to run this district is pretty incredible. So, thank you very much for your, for your commitment and for your presentation. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. We're getting there. May I have a motion to approve the school improvement plans for the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you. Our last presentation tonight, Mr. Whitehouse will come forward, Board, and provide some information on our school improvement plans. As you know, they are required for every school and are expected to be actually live plans that are actionable and very strategic in terms of helping every student succeed. So Mr. Whitehouse will provide some more information for the submittal of these to the state. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Good news is, my item won't cost you any money. So I will just talk you through the context around the school improvement plans. And as mentioned, these are an integral part of the work of our schools. So in simplest terms, our school improvement plans are focused plans of actions that are designed by each school and centered on student outcomes. The planning for these actually begins at the beginning of the, end of the prior school year. So we do a lot of work as the school year is wrapping up and getting ready for the next school year. A lot of that starts with data analysis. As you know, we get a lot of academic data in at the end of the school year that we spend a lot of time working with schools on digging into that data and really understanding not only what the data looks like, but also some of the root causes of that data and how we can go about solving some of those problems. Also includes attendance data, behavior data. There's a lot of things that we do look at for creating those school improvement plans, not just from my team, also a lot of support from grants and federal programs and also the area superintendents and working with each of their schools. So as Dr. Gullett mentioned, we shared at a previous work session, too, the goals for these school improvement plans are aligned with our district strategic plan. They do a lot of the work in helping us to reach our targets and our goals for the district. You'll see goals in there that relate to instructional practice, focus on subgroups, especially looking at where we see achievement gaps in our subgroups, graduation acceleration, positive school culture, school attendance, and of course, positive behavior support. So we have schools that focus in a lot of different areas, just depending on the needs of those individual schools. Also, like the district strategic plan, these are designed to be living documents. So we continually revisit these plans and the steps of the actions that are put in place and making sure that they're still meeting the needs of the school and that we're seeing the results as we progress through the year that we would expect to see. The school improvement plans also help to drive the creation of the Title I budgets for each of the schools, which most of our schools do receive Title I allocations, to make sure that we are aligning our resources at each of our schools. We don't want to be spending money haphazardly. We want to make sure that as we are developing our goals for the schools, that we're really asking ourselves what classroom resources are needed at these school sites, what professional learning is needed, and how can we best use the resources that we have available to meet the needs of our schools. Our schools that are designated as comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI schools, also receive UNISIG budgets. You'll see those identified within six of our school plans in there, and those funds are also aligned with the school improvement goals. The plans are all reviewed and approved at the beginning of the year, and we also review plans midway through the school year and looking at the data and looking at the outcomes so far that year for any adjustments. Our CSI schools are also reviewed by the Bureau of School Improvement, the Florida Department of Education, and they receive feedback from the state level as well. And once approved, then these plans are launched at our school sites as a part of a continuous improvement cycle. So that's the short and sweet of it, and I will certainly answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, go ahead.
Again, I don't have a question, but I do have just a general comment. So while I'm not at all saying I read all 2,200 pages of this document, I did take some time to look through several of the school plans. There are lots of gains in lots of areas and where school grades sometimes are one point in time. You can see a lot of gains and a lot of administrators and school teams that are doing a lot of hard work, making sure that students are making those gains. I appreciate progress monitoring. I know it, every time we roll out something new, it's, everybody has to get used to it. But I, for one, appreciate progress monitoring because it does give us the opportunity to see snapshots, one, two, and three, and see that progress that students are making. But the one primary comment that I want to make that I saw resonating through multiple school improvement plans was high-quality educators. We are lacking in so many areas because they were lacking a teacher, certified teacher, in front of those students. I know we have more than 100 vacancies right now in teaching. If this district, or any district across the state for that matter, is, is going to be able to truly move the needle on these kids that are needing it the most, we're, we're going to have to have more teachers. So at the sound of my voice, if you want to come teach, please do so. But that, that really honestly, the school improvement plans should also be a pat on the back for those teachers that are in our classrooms, to know how valuable they are. Just read your school's school improvement plan, and you can see where the gaps are, and you know it's because there's a missing teacher next door, or there's a missing teacher down the hall. And so it just made me appreciate all of the teachers that we have that are providing high-quality education all throughout this district and just really make me plead to say, we need more. So, thank you for this work, Mr. Whitehouse. I know it's a lot of work. 2,200 pages is a lot of work, but just, just grateful for all the, the teams that have identified the needs, and they know how to improve what needs to be done in their schools. But it's going to take the people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Any other comment, questions from the board? Okay. Hearing, hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. All right. We'll move on to our pulled agenda item. May I have a motion to approve Amendment Number Three to the Construction Manager Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price for Labor and Materials of Interior Construction Related to Construction of New Elementary School X. Change Order Six, Amendment Three, Project 24-102.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Board Member James, you pulled this item, and would like to have further discussion.
Thank you. So I pulled this item because I wanted to highlight to the board a concern that I have, that my hope is, we will be able to walk away and have maybe a plan for a work session in, in the month of November about owner-direct purchase. I think that we have a bit of a conundrum on our hands, and I would love to have a deeper dive as a board to not only understand owner-direct purchase, but how Marion County is processing owner-direct purchase versus other districts, even just our neighboring districts are processing it. So, this particular item, which is for one of our new elementary schools, Elementary X, is essentially us having to give back the money that we would have saved for sales tax. And I have just a brief timeline that I want to share with you all, and I'll forward it to Attorney Powers to forward to you all if you would like. But essentially, on 7/17, so going back to the middle of July, the vendor, which in question is City Electric, was, submitted an application, and the application was approved, 8/8, and then on that same day, Facilities was notified and notified the vendor that basically they needed to do an updated application. And that's primarily because state law changed July 1st about the requirements. And I want to highlight that this is not about the state law. It's about how we are navigating through meeting the expectations of the state law. So, the owner-direct purchase request packet was approved by MCPS on 8/13, and on 9/5, the CO was approved by MCPS. So now we're into September, and notification essentially comes through that says, wait, they gotta, it, things are going to switch up. This isn't going to work. And it gets to the point where City Electric, and City Electric files a notice of nonpayment to MCPS and Osley Construction, because essentially, City Electric bought the materials in the summer, and they were ready to do the work. And because of our practices and, and the delay, money was not given to the subcontractor. And so they put essentially a lien on not only the CM doing the work for us, but also MCPS on us. And I find it all so interesting that today, of all days, as I pulled this item for discussion, City Electric is now an approved vendor after months, and nothing has changed. And so my request, I, I'm absolutely going to approve this item because it needs to move forward, and the bill has to get paid, and we have to proceed. But I pulled it to discussion because as a board, I think we need to have a work session about owner-direct purchase, especially, I'm so prayful that our community is going to support our half-cent in two weeks. And that is going to open a beautiful window of so much more construction that can happen in this community. But we need to make sure that we're maximizing our taxpayer dollars. And I want to see this board have a conversation about our owner-direct purchase, how timely we are, ensuring that we're not only meeting the legislative obligation, but that we are also presenting a plan that is the most advantageous for the CMs that we're working with so that they can get their process done timely as well. So, I am more than happy to forward this to the board members if you'd like. I received it from a CFO for the contractor, but I, I wanted to at least ask the board if you would be willing to have Dr. Gullett potentially put a owner-direct purchase presentation on a future work session for greater discussion.
I would 100%. Yeah.
Sure. While I certainly appreciate the conversation, I believe just a few items ago, we just approved an expert in this field, and so I would certainly want them to be a part of weighing in on procurement as well as what this looks like, because I think, regardless of what this board could come up with as our solution, it very well may not be the, the right one, because I dare say I am not an expert in any of this. So I don't know if Attorney Powers has additional information to weigh in on anything as far as a timeline today of how something happened differently than, than what's been happening for weeks. But I am open to having a conversation, but I don't want it without the hired experts that we just hired three items ago.
Yeah. That's who I want to present. So just to go on record, I don't want us to decide how to do owner-direct purchase. I want, I'm not sure any of us have ever been, certainly not collectively since I've been on the board, had the opportunity to learn about what owner-direct purchase is. And as the people hired by the taxpayer to supervise the money, this is how we save money in capital projects, and I want to make sure that I understand it fully and that all of us understand it fully, especially when we're asking the taxpayer to give us more of their tax-paying dollars so that we can continue to improve Marion County Public Schools.
Thank you. Any other comment from the board? And I will say that I wholeheartedly agree that we, as a board, are tasked with the what, and, and I believe what we're in consensus on what we want is a smooth, timely, meets the letter of the law process. How that occurs is operations, and to be briefed on that is going to be very important because this, whatever, I don't even know what to call it. It was, it was a long day of trying to figure it out. I'll say that. And that just can't continue to, to keep happening. That's in no one's best interest. So I would defer to Dr. Gullett as to the when, but it's clear from what I'm hearing from the board, you know, that, that we do just want to be in the know about this. Dr. Gullett?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I welcome a presentation and a work session. I think we need to do that. The very reason that you had an item before you for your consideration tonight is because we really need to utilize the experts in the field. I've, you know, felt really strongly about that. And so I think you heard the, the expert voice and the experience coming to the table. I think that is going to be nothing but a, but a benefit to Marion County in multiple ways, and they don't know this yet, but I already planned to have them, with the board approval tonight, invite them to my facility committee that's going to reconvene next week. So, sorry for the folks that don't know that yet, but, because we need to, we need to bring those experts together and work on a plan. And so I would just say, when they've had an opportunity to come on board and, and look at all this, yes, absolutely think that is the next step to come back think that is the next step, to come back with, we're digging very deeply into this, and we're not leaving any stone unturned. So, I'm excited about that work, I think it's necessary. I think it's been challenging, but it's been necessary, so I'm looking forward to that coming. I don't know, I was actually looking at the calendar, if it can be done in the next few weeks, but it's certainly something that I'll ask the team to talk about next week. I won't be there, because I'll be here with all of you, but we'll certainly ask when I think they can be ready to bring this topic back and some others.
As soon as practicable. How's that sound? Okay? All right. Any other further discussion comment from the board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. All right, that brings us to our board committee reports and concerns. We'll start with a few meeting reminders. A special work session has been scheduled on October 30th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to review our policies and procedures. An additional special work session has been scheduled on October 31st, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to review policies and procedures. We'll do that if needed. Hopefully, we can all be available and very productive on the 30th, and get it knocked out. But we have the 31st reserved, you know, in case we're not able to make that happen. The next administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for November 7th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. A special board meeting has been scheduled for November 7th, 2024, at 7:30 a.m. The next school board meeting has been scheduled for November 12th at 5:30 p.m. All right, so we will move on to our board comments, and we'll start with Superintendent Gullett.
Thank you. Board, I'll be really brief. I want to say welcome again to these wonderful gentlemen that are here with us tonight, and appreciate their leadership and all that you do to represent why we're here. And I'll just land on that, students. So, today is my mentee first-take-stock-in-children's birthday. It's a very special birthday for her, I'm not gonna use her name, but she knows who she is. And it's a reminder that we all are needed to serve. So, I'm gonna do a shameless plug. Again, I've asked my team this before, and I'm gonna throw this out there again. We are still in need of mentors. We are neat, yes, I know, we all remember, nodding their head. But for all the reasons we've always talked about, our students, many of them are facing adult issues that we can't imagine, and yet they come to school. So, helping to serve every student where they are, and help them find their path. Today, I saw a light shining in my mentee's eyes that I've been waiting for years to see. And it provides hope and inspiration, in confirmation of the work that we're doing. So, I urge anyone who's not a mentor, please mentor one of our students, because they really need us. And so, I'll land with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. And since your comments were just so student-focused, I'm just gonna go ahead down the line. And Student Representative Martin, welcome again. And any comments you'd like to share, now's your time.
Honestly, I really appreciate y'all for inviting me and allowing me to be in this position today. I agree pretty much with what everybody said, and I have no comments or concerns about anything you guys discussed today.
All right, thank you. And you're getting your feet wet. Yes, we'll move on to our next board member.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to recognize some people for allowing me to be up here on stage today. Mr. Carlo is back there, he's the person who recommended me for this position, thank you, sir. I'm just honored to be able to learn from the school board, see the decision-making process that goes into passing all these laws. And as Chair Thoreau said, over $70 million just in one meeting, that's really crazy, but...
Those are just the ones we discussed. Yeah, we had a whole consent agenda, and I don't even know what that added up to, a lot.
I think the students will appreciate that a lot of thought is going into where our money is going towards, because everyone's perspectives will be able to be considered. So, that's a very good thing. I also wanted to highlight once again the donation that the Carolina Panthers Charities Donor Advisor Fund gave to Vanguard High School and the football team. I know they'll very much benefit. I know our football team is very competitive, so... Next, I wanted to highlight, as the commanding officer for the JRTC unit at our school, JRTC is more than just a club or a class. It serves as a program that can be the supportive force towards our community. And because the main goal of JRTC is to serve others instead of oneself, so I just wanted to highlight some of the community events that our organization has been a part of. We have conducted over eight flag ceremonies for various local organizations, such as the Special Olympics, Mission Barbecue, and our high school home football games just in this quarter. For those who don't know, these flag ceremonies allow us to show our patriotism and respect, not just for our country's flag, but also for the values that we stand as a nation. Another personally notable event was that we conducted a flag ceremony for Gentiva's Diwali Festival. As an Indian, it was very inspiring to see both the American and Indian flags being present in this ceremony. I know that not just me, but also the members that were at the Diwali Festival appreciated that. I also wanted to highlight some of our upcoming community events. On October 26th and 27th, our JRTC program will be contributing towards the Marion County Veterans Appreciation Weekend. We'll be supporting their flag ceremony, showcasing our drill routines for the public, and also supporting other activities that promote what our veterans have done for our country. Lastly, I also want to emphasize that on November 2nd, we are hosting a marksmanship or air rifle competition at Vanguard for schools across our region. The schools span from Gainesville all the way down to the Tampa area. Our marksmanship team will be helping out with the logistics and also scoring the targets. This will allow them to learn how the sport works outside of actually just shooting the targets. Also, this competition, I believe, will bring extra exposure to our JRTC program and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Ms. Martinez?
Hello, Madam Chair.
All right, Attorney Powers.
The only comments that I would have is regarding our approval of 18.1 tonight, I will also send out additional information to the board regarding the status of that, and how things are working there, and what we can do for the future. I've also scheduled to meet with the superintendent and the board chair in order to further, you know, evaluate what options we have, and I will look forward to bringing some suggestions and some factual information to the table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Campbell?
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of comments tonight. First of all, always love to welcome new student board members, so grateful to have student representatives to the school board, thank you. And yes, Vanguard Marksmanship, they take that really seriously, you're really good at it, too. So, I'm excited to hear how all that plays out over the course of the next couple of weeks. Chair, this evening, I believe that it was stated kind of in the script that families, if they were questioning their students' expulsion, that they would be heard during our special board meeting on November 7th. But I don't think that was worded correctly originally. Nevertheless, we do have that meeting, as you said, at the end, the special school meeting on November 7th, because we do have some families that are coming before us, I believe so. Dr. Hembrook? Yes, okay, yes, that's what I thought, I don't think it was worded correctly at the very beginning, but we do have that special board.
That was confusing, and that was my fault.
Oh, no, no, it's fine, it's the way the script read, and it's fine. I did want to acknowledge that we did have some perfect audits that we approved tonight during the consent agenda for Dunellen Elementary, Emerald Shores, Horizon Academy, and Osceola Middle School. I beat you to it, Vice Chair Conrad. And so, always grateful, no, to those teams. A couple of those have had multi-years of perfect audits, Osceola being one for sure, and that's in District One. So, super grateful for the teams there and all that they're doing. Today was a busy day in Marion County Public Schools, several of us were at the Bellevue High School Magnet Showcase Career and Technical Education touring and seeing those classrooms and the hard work being done there. I missed my own children by like one class period, I think Ms. Conrad was in the same class when one of my children, you may not have known that. But he, when he got home, he said, "I think Lori Conrad was in my class today." I was like, "Yes, yes," because I walked in and said, "Do you have a Campbell?" She said, "No, you just missed him." But also, earlier this afternoon, before coming to the board meeting, I also went to the district bowling tournament, because as Dr. Gullett was talking about, her mentee, my mentee, was playing in the district bowling tournament today. And when I was there, I'm grateful that she and another student from Forest High School, at that time, had qualified for state individually. So, one individual had gotten second, my mentee had gotten third, and then, but they were in a team competition, and Forest had the opportunity potentially to win at the team competition to go and actually represent us as a team at state. And I had to leave before I found out the outcome, and Mr. Tucker already left, and I haven't been texting. So, I don't know if Forest is gonna go as a team, but we do at least have two students going as individuals to state, representing this district in bowling. And so, super grateful. They were competing against schools from Jacksonville whenever I was there, so I mean, there are lots of teams throughout the district, and Marion County was hosting that. Also, I already mentioned briefly that last evening I did speak to a community group about the half-cent sales surtax. Today, I also placed a public social media post out in many ways dispelling a lot of misinformation that has been shared, that I have seen and heard in the community. Those were my personal thoughts, but if anyone wants to see them, they can go to Facebook and see my personal thoughts on the half-cent sales tax. And I encourage board members, also, if you haven't been doing that, please, let's encourage our community and dispel the misinformation. And I also wanted to mention that on the work session last Thursday, I presented proposed changes to the school list that each school board member represents. That discussion does coincide nicely with the rezoning conversation, but after a long day that we had been having on Thursday, that was not the right time to present that information. I also did not share at that time all the resources that were used to create that draft proposal, so I know board members received all of that on Monday of this week. The primary reason for my request is frankly not about us. Last year, I presented the idea, and I presented an idea like Pinellas County does, where schools are not assigned to specific school board members. And at that time, the board did not want to go in that direction, though I'm also interested in potentially adding that to the conversation if the board is interested in that. But ultimately, I still do recommend that we have a future work session about this topic, because again, it's not about us. We have schools assigned to us for parents and families to have an elected liaison with the school board and the school district. The schools we have assigned to us is not about us, it's why the proposal I created, just as a first draft, was created using student population data, maps of both school board member live-in districts, as well as zoning maps for elementary, middle, and high school. The seven soon-to-be-eight public high schools and one charter high school were separated among board members. Ten public middle schools and two charter middle schools were separated among board members, and the elementary schools were separated as evenly as possible as well. Overall, student population in schools was also considered, and I tried to distribute those evenly among board members. Again, it was a first draft, it was not the right time to present it, but I still leave the meeting today saying, "Chair, if other board members concur, I would request we hold a work session on this topic."
All right, ma'am.
And finally, that's last, and then I'll say, early voting began yesterday on the November 5th general election. We have a lot of important items on this ballot. I encourage those listening, including our newest 18-year-old students, please vote.
Yes, please educate yourself and then vote, even better. Board Member Campbell, thank you for your tenacity, thank you for your recognition that maybe the board as a whole might be more receptive on a fresher morning. I would have, I'm fine with having it as a work session item on a future work session, we can talk about a little bit more. I don't think there's any board member sitting up here that doesn't agree with you that it's not about us. It's about our feeling of connection, you know, and having that reciprocity and that comfort level. You know, it takes a lot to establish credibility with people in the trenches, and when you have that, you hate to let it go, and they hate to let you go. So, there's pieces of this that I do think are worth discussing, because we are going to, we're growing, we're gonna continue to grow. The distribution may or may not need to change, so I'm fine with having it at a work session instead of, you know, just at the end. So, thank you for bringing it forward. I know I'm like a mule about it, but I'm willing to discuss. All right, Dr. Gullett, so we can put that on a future work session.
Certainly, if that's what the board would like to do, absolutely.
As a board item, to discuss if the rest of the board agrees. Okay, well, that's three. The other two?
I'm indifferent, I don't care.
Okay. Cummings, because you weren't here for the beautiful conversation.
I've always been very frank about...
You don't want to give up your school. We spoke up for you.
We did, we did, we did.
You're just about to have 25,000 students very soon.
Bring 'em.
So, Madam Chair, if I may ask, is there a preference from the board of dates, so we can put a hold on the calendar for that?
First of the year is fine by her.
Okay, first of the, thank you.
Start the new year fresh, yes. Fresh perspective. We represent schools, you know, we serve, we're elected at large by everybody in the county. And then, we serve certain schools, like I shared with you that I represent Vanguard High School. Do I want to give Vanguard High School to anyone else while I'm still on this board? Heck, no.
That was one of my schools.
What's that?
I'm telling you, Dunell's one of my schools.
And there you go. Do you want to give up your school?
No. But again, it's not about us, it's about the numbers of people and families that are served by each board member. And if we don't make a change, Reverend Cummings, when we add three new schools, we'll have 25,000 students.
That's fine. I got elected by more than 25,000 people.
So, anyway, we will have a fun and enlightening and stimulating conversation, and lively, I'm sure, after the first of the year. All right. New moderator, Cummings.
Thank you.
What you got?
Thank you. I do want to welcome these young men to the dais. I was sitting here, I don't think we've ever had four males on the dais since I've been on the board. I really don't think so. So, it's good to have some testosterone up here on the board with us. But very, very articulate young men, glad to have you guys, and that's my comments for tonight.
All right, thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member James?
Good evening. I have a couple things, so I'll start with some quick recognitions. Last Thursday, I was able to attend SPAR's Fall Festival, and it was just the best. The North End communities always really show out, and there were so many parents and students there, and it was really so awesome. And we were able to raise some money for Dr. Alday's special project, and it was just a really great time. So, I really enjoyed that. And I want to remind the whole community, but specifically the North End, that last year, Pappy's Place, which is a little restaurant right at the four-way stop in Anthony, started sponsoring a very large community trunk-or-treat at Jambalaya. And it is this Saturday, and they do candy drops from the helicopter, and it is quite an experience. So, I wanted to remind our community, young or old, if they would like to come, it starts, there's I think a candy drop at 5:00 and a candy drop at 7:00, but it's on Facebook, so those who are interested can go find the event. But it is a wonderful time, and it's free, and it's a great, safe opportunity for students to be able to participate in the spirit of the holiday. I did get to go to Bellevue High School today and be a part of their Magnet Showcase. As a former employee, it was so wonderful to be back there, and I was very complimentary of the library particularly. Mr. Frender has really given it a facelift. It looks so beautiful, there's all-new furniture, it looks wonderful. And I'm always impressed, and I'm sure these gentlemen are just the same, I am so impressed when you talk with the students. We were in Dale Tony's room, he is robotics and technology, and the kids in that room are just beyond smart, I mean, so far beyond. And having a conversation, and, you know, just getting to know them, and I said, "Well, where do you..." Most of them were seniors, and I said, "Well, where do you plan to apply to college?" And the one gentleman, I didn't catch his name, casually says, "Caltech." And I was like, "Oh, Caltech." I said, "Okay," I said, "What is your SAT score?" And he's like, "Well, my ACT is better." And I was like, "Okay, what's your ACT score?" And he said, "35." And I said, "Oh, of course you're applying to Caltech, that tracks." And I just was so impressed. The young man standing next to him was applying to UAF, has like a 1535 on the SAT, just tremendous. But as I was walking with Ms. Guest, what I made sure she knew was that what's most impressive is not their SAT and ACT score, but their EQ, their ability to engage in conversation with adults, their ability to have practical skills. Oftentimes, you find kids who are incredibly bright lack the ability to engage in discourse and be a part of regular society, because they are so intelligent. And these children exemplified to me what career and technical education is in Marion County, which is a well-rounded student. So, any day I get to hang out with kids is a good day for me, so I just wanted to make sure I showcase that. I wanted to know, since we did have a Facebook post today about our calendar and our weather makeup days, which I will not digress into, I wanted to know, I think we're about into a season where we're ready to reconvene- a season where we're ready to reconvene a calendar committee to have a talk about the calendar again. And am I right on that? Because...
We approved two years.
We approved two years.
Okay, so we, I thought we approved last year's and this year's, but we approved this year's and next year's. Okay, so thank you, because I was confused about that, and so I wanted to make sure that I knew what I was talking about. So I appreciate you clarifying that. Something that came up, I was approached about, there was a local news article written about our expulsions recently, and it had the picture of MTI, and the discussion in the community was, "Why are those kids going to a technical institute?" And it hadn't really occurred to me before at FACE that a large amount of our community understands MTI for the student that it served prior to our major transition. And my understanding is that by the end of this year, all of our technical programs will essentially be housed at Marion Technical College through a dual enrollment program. And so, is there going to be discussion, Board or Dr. Gullett, about changing the name of MTI? Because I do think that there could be confusion. I know there is confusion in the community about Marion Technical Institute was a place for career and technical learning, and we will not be servicing career and technical learning on MTI's campus anymore after this year. And so, what is that going to look like? And is there, Dr. Gullett, a plan to even engage in a conversation around that?
So, thank you, Board Member James. The simple answer is yes. I was just meeting with Mr. Smallridge the other day, though. I was out visiting, and that's a transition back to MTC, and I can't say for certain they'll all be over there next year. I mean, he's working on it, and as you know, we have an expansion board underway. So it all depends on the timing and the completion of those spaces, and he has a fantastic plan, but I can't say that it's all going to be next year. So as we evolve and transition, and what you heard earlier with all the students that we serve here, what it could look like for the future is absolutely a consideration, and I think we will have to revisit that.
Okay. Thank you. I would just, if there's a way in the future, we could make sure that we're highlighting the students that we are, when we say MTI, if we could, because I think we have a name now for alternative ed program. Is that correct?
Well, we're trying to say it's Alternative Learning at MTI, just because this is the official location. Yes.
That would be, I think that would be helpful in the community if we started really kind of encompassing that entire phrase, so that when people see it or read it, it may encompass the type of student we're talking about when we talk about that versus the other programs we do offer here. I wanted to provide a bit of an update on the North Marion High School window situation. They are, and I don't know board members, I go out there rather frequently for a variety of reasons, and so I have a mentee there, my daughter does MCYFL practice out there, so I'm there often. So more windows have come out, and no windows have arrived. Now, the windows, which were supposed to arrive on 10/6, will not arrive until 10/31. And so, there is now no windows in the admin suite either. And I understand it's in preparation for the windows to arrive, but it's my understanding that a change order is going to be forthcoming about the timeline, and essentially an extension. And I just want to remind this board, if you have not gone out there, please go out there to visit and understand, truly, when there are away teams playing for football, they think that the school is condemned, because there is wood on the windows. And so, it is a really dismal state, and they've tried to make light of it as best as they can, but the timeline that we were even presented with is not being met. So it is just something to keep in the back of mind. Two more things. We got an email today. I had requested some information about how much workload Mr. Taylor is doing in the Safe Schools Department, and I, it was shared with all of us, I think, this afternoon. And I, Board, I have concerns that he has too much on his plate and needs someone else to be able to share that workload with. And I know that the state essentially says that it can only be one person's job, but I would love an opportunity to creatively problem-solve, either in the operations side or otherwise, how we can support him. That is a tremendous amount of work for one person to do, and that is not the only job that he is doing. And if that means someone else needs to be hired to take on some of the other roles and responsibility he has, so that his only sole job is to review those packets, that is maybe something that needs to be considered. But I think that it is of immense importance that we ensure that we are, I mean, he's finding errors in every single packet. And so, it's not as if he's reviewing them, and then they're all perfect, and it's this like very light and easy thing. And I just have concerns about that level of workload in addition to the other things that are on his plate, which include making sure everyone is in compliance with their training, which was brought to my attention, that we have administrators on our sites that have not completed the proper training that they're supposed to complete to be in compliance. And so, I've also requested that list, because I want to understand what is the hang-up and where is, because ultimately, the way I understand it, it all rolls up. And as the board, we're going to be the ones that have to answer for why things are not happening the way that they are supposed to be happening. So I would love for operations to consider either an additional position in the Safe Schools Department that's going to support the other work Mr. Taylor's doing, or some way to help him. And then, I'm also still looking forward to the list of individuals who have yet to complete what they're supposed to complete, because I want to make sure that we are in compliance. So I think that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, as long as the rest of the board, you know, agrees, there's always concern of putting too much that's really important and required and mandated, you know, on one person's plate, and it gets me thinking back around, you know, to other departments, that we have these mandates and that are partially funded, and yet, it's a tremendous responsibility and a huge lift. And it frustrates me, because it happens in other areas where people are required to have things done, including recertifying within a certain time, and the reasons, I'm sure, are as varied as the individuals themselves, but somehow, it doesn't happen. And there you go. And you do have a point that that does filter up. I mean, it is our intention to have, be as safe as possible, everybody in compliance, you know, with their training. Is there not enough opportunity? You know, what's the problem? So I would be open to whatever it takes, because it's that important.
Thank you. I would just add that Mr. McFadden, I are in constant conversation and review of what the needs are, even just several times today. And the understanding that the mandates are not coming from the district, they're coming from the state, is really important, I think, at this point, to reiterate for the public to understand. And there, if you remember, Board, I referenced this item in our last presentation, and I highlighted in the strategic plan updates, that line item with Safe Schools, and the updates from the state are massive, and they're coming fast and furiously. And we all are committed to the safest environment every single day and every space in our campuses and in our district. And they require a lot, not just on the Safe Schools team, but on our entire team for completing required training and so forth. So we're in constant conversation about what does this look like as it continues to change. Sometimes, it feels like weekly. So we had a new item that came up, I think, Board, that you know about, that is now requiring the media centers to be locked, and so we're working through that. And so, every day, the phone rings, and we're trying to process, how do we do this, and how do we work with our team? So understand the concerns, and I share them, too, and so we're working through that.
Thank you. Now, this, yes, go ahead.
And I appreciate what Dr. James said. There's, with this, there's so many changes constantly we're getting in this area. I can understand how some things could have gotten behind, but there's a lot on Mr. Taylor's plate, as well as our administrators' plates, who may have not completed that training. I think we have to take all those things into consideration when we look at that. We just came through two storms as well. All those things have to be looked at, judiciously looked at, to make sure that we're not jumping the gun on too many things.
Right. And making sure that there's more than one person on each campus, you know, because people move, people retire, you know, we need the layers, and the Safe Schools Department is doing a tremendous job, yeoman's lift. So, but the state's requiring what they're requiring, and we have to respond, and we have to be in compliance, and we have to make sure we continue to convey the urgency to all the folks that have to complete these trainings. And according to my understanding, it's less than two hours. I guess if you're a teacher, you probably get MIP. I don't know if you get a stipend, but, you know, knock it out. Just get it done. Better for everybody. All right. Vice Chair Conrad?
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we recognized 330 staff members that worked our shelters, just really thankful for the work that they do and the service that we provide for our community. But I also just want to quickly highlight all our staff that is still here. We look out, the room kind of clears after all of our recognitions, and the people that are out in front of us are here regularly. And so, here to help answer questions, explain things to us, and I just am continually grateful for the work that you all do and the information that you provide us, and so just thankful for you all. I know it's a long night. You've worked all day, and you stay here and help us work through all of these items that we have in front of us. So just wanted to say thank you for that. It was a mentee day. I got to see my mentee today also, but I did want to give you an update on TakeStock. So earlier in the year, we had 30 openings needing mentors here in Marion County. We are down to 15. So if you have a friend or a spouse or someone at church that is looking for something to do, I just want to say, as rewarding and beneficial as it is, it's not really too big of a commitment. I do 30 minutes a week. I know that that's not even necessary. You could get away with a little less than more. So I just want to encourage you to reach out to me or anyone else if you're at least a little bit interested. Would like to see all of our students that need mentors to have them. So wanted to share that. Also, along that line, I know last week, we, I was asking about a business partner for Maplewood, and I hear that that's in the works, so was really excited that every school will have a business partner. So just wanted to share that positive information. Several other board members shared about visiting Bellevue High School, and I had the same reaction as Dr. James. I really couldn't help but reflect of my time in high school, and I just continue to be amazed when I visit a high school campus, and the students are so engaged and communicate so well, and the things that they are working on and completing are amazing. And so, I just want to lift up our staff that are working on the high school level and the middle school level, that congratulate you on the work that you're doing, because there are some amazing things going on in Marion County Public Schools. So thank you for the work and your dedication every day. I did have, I do have one question that I would like to get an update on. Dr. Gullett, I've had several schools reach out to me, and there are some struggles with SuccessMaker. And I know that we just approved that not too long ago, but schools are struggling with some technical issues, getting that to run. There's also some issues with the assessment piece, as it appears to only have one assessment piece, and it's hard to recalibrate students if that first assessment is not really on track with how a teacher may feel the student would be placed. So I'd just like a little update on that. I don't really know what an appropriate timeline would be for that. If you can provide direction on that. But you know, the last several years, we've kind of had a turnover in the programs that we're using to support our students. And so, we went from iReady, and then we went from, to iXL, and now we're using SuccessMaker. And so, I just want to make sure the instrument and tools that we're using are providing solid instruction for our students. And so, I just have some concerns about how that's rolled out and if our students are being able to use it. So sometime in the near future would be great.
Certainly. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. We'll take a look at that. Absolutely.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. And I'll just stand by saying that the deep and committed work continues, and we will keep pressing on and keep doing everything we can to help every student succeed. So if there's no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion, Board Member Campbell. Seconded by who?
Me.
Seconded by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. We are adjourned at 8:16 PM. Thank you.